Okay, we call to order the city council meeting for Monday, October 15th, 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is the invocation. I'd ask you all to please write and Chief Deike is going to give us.
As the council gathers to make their decisions for the community, may we engage in meaningful discussion and use the best, our best skills and judgment as we consider the matters that are placed before us. May we always be guided by understanding and wisdom and act in accordance with our best for our community. And as always, we remember those who serve in the armed forces to protect the liberties of America.
Thank you, Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under our own, indivisible, free, and just for all.
Okay, next item is roll call.
Rosato?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we've got the entire city council here tonight, minus the mayor. So, under the reminders, I'm going to remind everyone that, sitting here tonight, I am acting as the mayor pro tem, and any votes that I take, I'll be taking as the leadership of an alderman, not as the mayor.
Correct.
Okay. Next reminder then is for everyone to please use the microphone so we can get good recordings and so anybody at home can hear us. And if anybody from the public speaks, please use the microphone at the podium. Item five is items removed, added or changed, and talking to our city administrator. We have none. Anybody else on the council have anything they want to do? Item six is the consent agenda. Alderman, Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file historic preservation commission minutes for March 11th, 2019; Plan commission minutes for February 20th, 2019; and March 6th, 2019; Committee of the Whole minutes for March 19th, 2019. Approvals: April 5th, 2019 payroll in the amount of $852,368.84. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,393,903.44. City council minutes for March 18th, 2019 and April 1st, 2019. Ordinance 19-27: Amending the official zoning map for 1430 Cherry Drive and 1360 Geese Road, City of Batavia. Resolution 19-047R: Authorization to purchase one 2019 Ford F-250 truck from Landmark Ford for $36,613. Resolution 19-039-R, 19-040-R, 19-041-R, 19-042-R, 19-043-R, and 19-044-R, and 19-045-R: Requesting permits for iDOT foreclosure of various roadways for 2019 special events. Ordinance 19-21: Declaring surplus property. Resolution 19-036-R: Authorization to purchase three police department patrol vehicles for $101,775. Resolution 19-046: Approval of the final plat of subdivision for Prairie Commons first re-subdivision. Resolution 19-048-R: Authorizing a change order for the 2019 sidewalk and curb replacement program with Schroeder and Schroeder for $35,000. And Resolution 19-054-R: Authorization of execution of an agreement with the Archon Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $179,041 to perform directional borings for Laurin Apartments in 2401 Hawks Drive. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second?
Motion by Atack, second by Stark. Roll call, please.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is matters from the public. So, if anybody in the public has got anything they'd like to address or sign, please come up to the podium and give us your name and what it is you'd like to present. I might note that the gentleman entering or coming up to the microphone is a former alderman, Alderman Dietz.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be home. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Valley Showed at Workshop and like to promote the annual pancake breakfast, which is coming up on Sunday, May 5th, beginning at 7:30 in the morning. That's our annual fundraiser. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year. We look forward to lots of participation from the entire Fox Valley community. In addition to the delicious pancakes, we have cash raffles. I've even got a few tickets in my pocket to sell tonight. We have gift baskets and other donated items to bid on and auction off as well. Again, 7:30 in the morning to noon, Sunday, May 5th, right here at 325 Main Street, which is our address here in Batavia. I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none. Next item is item eight, which is the main three minutes. Kurt Hageman, I think you're here to present that tonight?
I'll go first. I made it in just in time. So, here we are. Event season is upon us. We're just going to pretend that yesterday's weather didn't happen because we are fully in the midst of spring and summer season getting rolling here. We kicked things off last Friday with the first, second Fridays event of the year, and right away got a harsh reminder of all the fun that comes with planning outdoor events. We did some scrambling at the last minute to make some adjustments to the cold and we're shit. The high winds were kind of an issue for us. But, we made it work. Successful event. We had several downtown businesses that participated, offering special events and discounts for the night. Limestone, Beardsguard, Paula's, Salvage Heart, and several others that were involved. Everybody I've talked to so far reports a good, busy, successful night. So, we think it went pretty well. Something new that we were trying. We held a pop-up craft market at the Main Street office in the Newton House. That went well. We also ended up hosting the Batavia Environmental Commission, the Conservation Foundation, and the Natural Communities Native Plants Group. That was all planned to be outside. They also had planned a, to make some smores and have a fire pit, which we decided that was not the best idea, given the 40 mile an hour winds that were predicted that night. So, that all moved inside to the Newton House as well. We filled that place up pretty well, but it worked out well for everyone. We move right along this Saturday, Downtown Egg Hop. We have 30 businesses ready to hand out eggs to all the kids who fill the downtown. Full slate of events scheduled at the Pegbon Center, just like we've been doing for the past few years. We do still need some volunteers, mainly some crossing guards to help out with safety in town. So, if anyone's interested in helping out, you can link to, there's a signup link on our website and on our Facebook page. So, check that out if you want to give us a hand. With Easter being so late this year, it kind of stacked us up tight. So, while we're getting ready for that, we're also in full swing for June 1st. That's the opening of the 24th Annual Opening Day of the Farmer's Market, which we also tie into the Well Batavia Festival, as well as the Race to Market. So, you know, each of those events kind of share a focus together on wellness and healthy living in Batavia. They also kind of started, it's a fun way to help promote local businesses, both the downtown brick and mortar businesses, as well as the local businesses that come in for the market each week. This year, we're going to have over 35 small businesses joining us weekly at the market, plus the handful that kind of come in once a month or so. That doesn't include all of the 15 to 20 artisan businesses that also join us on the third Saturday each month for the Artisan Collective. Also, coming up right away, next week kicks off the Preservation Week. So, we're partnering with the Depot Museum and the other preservationist organizations in the area, the library and the Park District, and several others. There are events happening every day, Monday through Saturday, the 27th. The Main Street portion comes on the final day, Saturday, the 27th. We'll be hosting a walking tour of historic downtown properties. That starts at 10:00 AM. There's an $8 cost for that. Registration information is on our Facebook page. That's all I have for you tonight, but as you mentioned, we have Kurt Hageman here, a member of our Board of Directors, and we invited him to come along tonight and just kind of share his thoughts about Main Street.
Susan?
Chris, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the, because I am such an avid runner, will the registration be up soon for the Race to Market?
It's up. Yeah, it went live like Friday, I think. So, it's all up.
People are still looking for it. I didn't know where to direct them.
Yeah, I, like I said, everything stacked up at once, but I added it to the website today, and it's live on Facebook, too.
Okay, great.
Everything's up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here. Chris and Patrick asked me to come tonight just to kind of speak about my, well, one of the reasons why I came back on the board. This is my second tour of duty on the Main Street board here, and talk about what it means to me, what I think it means to the city, this organization. I remember when I came on the board, this is now almost eight years ago, my first, my first time around, I look at the downtown and we looked at our events, and we were really, really excited that we got like almost 500 people at the block party. And, we turn around now to last year, looking at it, and we lost count somewhere over 3,000, as far as the amount of people that were down there. I look at Cocktails in the Park, our first event, on Clark Island, even though we were there until 4:00 in the morning, trying to figure out how to get stuff off the island, figuring out, how can we get 200 people here? And, this year, I'm fortunate enough to be chair of that event, and now we're looking at, do we need to cap ticket sales? Because the event has just become so great and so good for the downtown. Chris mentioned the start of the Farmer's Market here, you know, looking at it before where it was, you know, it was a good Farmer's Market, but now we're at the point where I talk to people from Schaumburg, Palatine, and other places. They're like, "Oh, we're going down to that Batavia Farmer's Market." And I hear people from all over talking about coming down to our events here. So, you know, I look at the different organizations that I've served on here, and I look at Main Street as being almost addicting in serving toward. I mean, several of you sitting here have served on the board with me there in the past. You know, I talk about this town being addicting itself, this organization being addicting, and the way that our community gets behind this, the way that our city gets behind this, the way all of you show up at our events and help promote the organization, which ends up being more for our business owners, for the property owners downtown, you know, all aspects of this organization. So, I mean, to me, it, when I was asked to come back on the board again, it was an absolute honor, and I couldn't wait to jump back on. I know, speaking from the board, that we are extremely grateful for the support financially from the city, as well as from the property owners and taxpayers and the SSA, and looking forward to continuing to push the organization forward, push downtown Batavia forward, and see just what more we can bring, and how much more this organization can grow, and the city itself can grow. So, that's all I had to say. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you all at the Egg Hop, at Cocktails in the Park, and everything else. So...
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Kurt? I just want to say, Kurt, thank you to you for jumping back onto the board and all the work that you and Chris and everybody else on the board do. I'm a strong supporter of Main Street, always have been, always will be, even if I won't be sitting in that chair. It just, you know, what you've mentioned, I don't think would be happening, at least to the magnitude that it is happening today, and it's because of all the volunteer hours and all the work that you guys put into it. So...
Excellent.
I certainly recognize it, and I think everybody else does, too.
Well, we appreciate it, and obviously, it goes for the city and all the volunteers and everyone. So, again, thank you all again.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on then to item number nine, which is a proclamation for Arbor Day, and Gary Holmes is going to accept that. And Alderman Atack, would you read that, please?
Yes. City of Batavia proclamation: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas the trees are renewable resources, paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Batavia has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, here do proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2019, as Arbor Day, in the City of Batavia, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations on the 15th day of April, 2019. I move we approve this proclamation.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Can we get a roll call on that, please?
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
All righty, motions carried. Gary, obviously, the mayor's not here this evening, but he did ask me if I'd present this to you, and when he comes back in town, he'll put his signature on it for you. And I just want to say on my behalf that, and on the mayor's behalf, I think that, certainly appreciate all the work that you and Scott Haynes and the Tree Commission put into everything they do for the City of Batavia. And here's your proclamation. Anything you want to say, too?
All right, just real quick, couple of comments. First of all, this goes towards our designation each year as a Tree City USA. So, that's why we go through this step every year, to raise awareness of Arbor Day and the importance of our urban forest. And then the second thing, I really just want to let the public know, thank you to city council, because this past year, as part of this budget, you approved two new staff positions in streets, and to partially offset that cost, we reduced contractual services for forestry. But those new positions will allow us to spend full-time efforts now focusing on our urban forest and forestry care of our public trees. So, we are just finishing up or getting to the ending stages of hiring those two positions. So, by the summer, we will have a tree crew out full-time on the streets taking care of our trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number 10 is Resolution 19-049-R: Authorization for creation of a City of Batavia Gateway Improvement Program. Alderman Stark, are you going to present that?
I am. Thank you. This is a terrific and exciting new economic development tool that was brought to the city council by staff, and we work through a process of putting in a gateway improvement program, which will expand out further than the edges of the Tiff District, so that companies that are in the corridors that are designated will have the opportunity to apply for grants to improve their facades, their landscaping, some signage on their properties. Chris, as I went through this, the only thing that I missed in your background and the memorandum is how much total is in the fund and how much we're spending. I didn't see that as I went through this. I know we talked about it, but I didn't see it in the official resolution of what the cap was on this amount of money.
Well, I did not put it in the official resolution, though I did convey to Peggy that the council has directed that $150,000 of the nearly $300,000 we now have at our disposal from the former CDEP grant from the state is going to be allocated for this program. The thought was that if we, if possible, we could use up all that $150,000 in two years. That may be ambitious, but in either case, we'll use it till we run out. And I think your point about opening up the door for economic development, in this case incentivizing private investment to the areas outside our Tiff District is, is, it's not that widespread in Northern Illinois, but where these type of programs have been used, they've proved to be very successful.
And so, that's, the purpose of this grant program is to allow applicants, there's a whole package that Chris has put together. It allows applicants to come to the city, and Chris will be out doing some outreach to those businesses in those areas, and get up to a $20,000 matching grant that could be used for numerous different things that's spelled out in the package. It's, it's a terrific way for companies that just aren't in the Tiff District and just on the edge of town to be able to spruce up the fronts of their businesses, to make our gateways to our town look better. It's an exciting new thing, and I'm so excited that staff brought this to the Committee of the Whole to, as another tool for them. So, is there anything you want to add to this?
Just to let the city know, per your directive, that we have added this fifth gateway, this corridor along South River Street. So, that extends all the way to where the rail spur crosses Route 25, and that's actually co-terminals with where the city's boundary line is along South State Street, or South River Street. One other point, just to elaborate a little bit on the outreach, we're going to be sending letters to every property, commercial property owner in any of the areas, to let them know that this, this is available, with a link to the place on the website where the project, the program will be better explained in, in terms of guidelines and applications and whatnot. So, yeah, our intention is to get that out. We once talked about having a cutoff date, and instead, the council's direction was, let's just run it throughout the year, and we'll issue, issue grants as the applications come in, and the appropriateness is determined, you know, by the council that the grant should be, should be awarded.
I think it's, it's an exciting new program, and I look forward to when our new monument signs go in, and you know, if business owners take advantage of this, you know, I hope that the money is spent sooner versus later. So...
Agreed.
I would make a motion that we pass Resolution 19049-R, a resolution authorizing the creation of the City of Batavia Gateway Improvement Program.
Susan?
Oh, sorry, Elliot.
Just a quick question. I agree, I'm supportive of this program, but I do have a question on the, the CDEP funds. It was 296,000 that was mentioned last week when we were in Cow. 150 of this is going towards this program. What's being done with the remaining 146?
Well, nothing's been specifically earmarked for one program or another. We have talked about utilizing some of the money to kick off this kind of chalet program, where we're going to be looking to construct, and we're still studying it, we're looking to construct, you know, four to six perhaps, seasonal units, but, you know, maybe of, what is that, 150 square feet or so, and we think we'll look to locate them along River Street, near the Larson Becker property. Nothing's been absoluted on that, but I know Laura mentioned in your weekly update that we'll be going to Muskegon, Michigan in June. I think actually Kurt might be going too, I don't remember, but to look at, at some of these in living color. So, that would be one place where other monies would go, and you know, I don't want to, let's put it this way, if you remember the Speedway money, the $600,000, there was about 1.5 million of that spent in proposals. So, people know that there's this money out there, and they know that, it's, you know, the spirit of it is to use it to, I believe, economic and community development, but it's best when you can leverage it to get private investment or create economic development opportunities like this chalet program. But to answer your question, that, that's all I know about besides the...
But none of Elliot would be special without it coming back to the city council.
Right. That's why I just wanted to clarify, so...
And I, Chris, could you expand maybe a little bit more on where this money's coming from? Because I think it's important, since we're on TV, that the public knows that none of this money's coming out of the city's general fund or...
No, that is correct. We were given money years ago. It's actually was federal money that was, you know, through the state distribution, under the Community Development Assistance Program, which was, at that time, administered by the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. It's called, it's called something else then, but at any rate, it was obligated towards certain projects or types of projects, and we were using it in a low-inches loan program. And then in 2016, it was determined by the Rowner Administration that this money needs to be spent, and we're not going to be, you know, tying any specific restrictions on the how it should be spent. So, it's essentially money that is available to the city for more or less unlimited uses, and it's, again, federal money. So, it's coming out of no city budget. The local taxpayers are not paying it as it's through, you know, through the city. So, yeah, it's, it's a rare opportunity, but yes, it's not cutting into any other budget that the city has.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we got a motion by Alderman Stark. We need a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Metzler. All in favor? Let's do a roll call, please.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Resolution 1949-R passes. Moving on then to Resolution 19-33-R, which is authorizing execution of a contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC for the 2019 Ward 1 Storm Sorre reconstruction, Phase 2, for an amount not to exceed $1,443,712.60. Alderman, Wolf?
Thank you. This is for, contract out through the engineering division for 2919 stormwater sewer reconstruction project for the east side. This is an award one. This is pretty much the second phase of what we've decided on, trying to get as much of it done as we can, as soon as we can, to reduce the damage from repeated flooding events in this area. Generally bounded by Pine Street, Redant Road, Geese, and Kirk Road. The main thrust is to oversize these pipes that are there and get this work done, so that will reduce the flooding in the area. Anybody have any questions? And one difference in this contract this year is we will be doing everything possible to try to keep the dust down compared to what happened last year. So, we will try to keep that to a minimum. But again, it is construction, so it needs to get done. I think this is the right step, and just another step in trying to solve some of the problems that we have on the east side. No other questions?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-33-R.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Item 12, Resolution 19-34-R: Authorizing execution of Task Order Number Three for Construction Engineering with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed $108,645. Alderman, Wolf?
Thank you. This is the construction engineering for the previously mentioned project and Ward One. Again, this is something that we just have to do to maintain the integrity of the project. No questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-34-R.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Okay, motion's passed. Next one is Resolution 19-50-R, the construction contract for the 2019 stream restoration. It's located on Mahoney Creek Tributary at Woodland Hills and Mahoney Creek, in that area there, and also at the area where Mahoney Creek crosses Wilson Street, with CNH Escavation Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed $248,029.10. Alderman, Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a little project history here. This is focused on Mahoney Creek and Tributary around the area there, on the east side, and again, trying to control the erosion from a lot of the rain events that we've had in the past few years, and will continue to have, and try to stabilize everything that we have there so we don't lose any of our existing infrastructure around the creek. Bids came in with a lot of difference from top to bottom, and we're going with the best bid on this. And it is with both option, both the base and the alternative A bid. So, we will get Woodland Hills Road corner done and the Wilson Street crossing. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-50-R.
Second?
Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Okay, motions carried. Item 14, Resolution 19-51-R, Authorizing Execution of Task Order Number Five for Construction Engineering Services with Engineering Resource Associates for an amount not to exceed $23,661. Alderman Wolf?
This is the construction engineering for the aforementioned project. And there's no other questions. I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-51-R.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Stark. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Okay, motions carried. Item 15, Resolution 19-52-R, Authorizing Execution of a One-Year Renewable Contract for the 2019 Brush Collection Services with Kramer Tree Specialties Incorporated for an amount of $219,912. Alderman Wolf, you've got that also?
Yes, thank you. Kind of a summary on this is the Street Division is responsible for administering the brush collection services for the City of Batavia. Provides pickup at 77, 7700 single-family residents in curbside brush collection seven times a year from May through November. Staff worked with Geneva and St. Charles over the winter to plan to bid this out together. It became increasingly difficult to coordinate as we got closer to the dates when each of the cities needed to solicit bids. With that said, each city ended up bidding our program separately. We had two bids on this from Trees R Us and from Kramer Tree Specialists. It was decided at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week that we would go with the Kramer Tree Specialists. Basically, the costs are a few cents higher per unit, per dwelling collection, but the costs on any major cleanup beyond the regular pickups would be substantially less going with Kramer Tree Service. So, that's why we decided to go that route. Does anybody want to say anything about?
Yeah, Alderman Wolf, when does the first pickup, when is that first pickup scheduled for?
Either.
First pickup would begin on May 13th on the east side.
East side, May 13th, and then the week following would be on the west side.
I know there was some conversation at the committee about maybe expediting or not expediting, but maybe changing the dates a little bit and getting the first pickup a little bit sooner. So, that is something that maybe the council can have some discussion on this coming year. So, next year, maybe there could be some changes made if deemed necessary.
And it took us about two years to decide to go a little bit longer to be able to pick up that last pickup. So, it might take us a while to get to that decision to move it up earlier.
Yeah, I mean, Alderman, you're, I'm sounding like the mayor now.
It happens.
But Alderman sitting three chairs in over there, brought it up last week that maybe things need to change a little bit on that, you know, with some of the storms that we're getting, as Alderman O'Brien quite often brings up. And then as evidence of yesterday's storm, with that heavy wet snow, there was probably some damage that happened that people would like to see their yards cleaned up a little sooner. So, maybe it's worthwhile having that conversation.
David, I'd like to add that I thought one of the residents, Nancy Holmeyer's suggestion that given, since things were so slow in July and August, that maybe that's a time when we only have one pickup and could easily add a pickup a little bit earlier. I know that Gary, you had said that what happens is just end up with a lot more stuff, but given that those months are so slow, it might not be the case. So, it might be worth looking into.
Well, it's a conversation for the future of the city council, they have. It's gonna include a couple of those gentlemen sitting out in the audience here tonight. So, too, that'll give you guys something to think about. So, did we have a motion on this?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chanset, second by Stark. Roll call, please.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
Nope.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Nope.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Okay, motions carried. Item 14, Resolution 19-51-R, Authorizing Execution of Task Order Number Five for Construction Engineering Services with Engineering Resource Associates for an amount not to exceed $23,661. Alderman Wolf?
This is the construction engineering for the aforementioned project. And there's no other questions. I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-51-R.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Stark. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Okay, motions carried. Item 15, Resolution 19-52-R, Authorizing Execution of a One-Year Renewable Contract for the 2019 Brush Collection Services with Kramer Tree Specialties Incorporated for an amount of $219,912. Alderman Wolf, you've got that also?
Yes, thank you. Kind of a summary on this is the Street Division is responsible for administering the brush collection services for the City of Batavia. Provides pickup at 7700 single-family residents in curbside brush collection seven times a year from May through November. Staff worked with Geneva and St. Charles over the winter to plan to bid this out together. It became increasingly difficult to coordinate as we got closer to the dates when each of the cities needed to solicit bids. With that said, each city ended up bidding our program separately. We had two bids on this from Trees R Us and from Kramer Tree Specialists. It was decided at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week that we would go with the Kramer Tree Specialists. Basically, the costs are a few cents higher per unit, per dwelling collection, but the costs on any major cleanup beyond the regular pickups would be substantially less going with Kramer Tree Service. So, that's why we decided to go that route. Does anybody want to say anything about?
Yeah, Alderman Wolf, when does the first pickup, when is that first pickup scheduled for?
Either.
First pickup would begin on May 13th on the east side.
East side, May 13th, and then the week following would be on the west side.
I know there was some conversation at the committee about maybe expediting or not expediting, but maybe changing the dates a little bit and getting the first pickup a little bit sooner. So, that is something that maybe the council can have some discussion on this coming year. So, next year, maybe there could be some changes made if deemed necessary.
And it took us about two years to decide to go a little bit longer to be able to pick up that last pickup. So, it might take us a while to get to that decision to move it up earlier.
Yeah, I mean, Alderman, you're, I'm sounding like the mayor now.
It happens.
But Alderman sitting three chairs in over there, brought it up last week that maybe things need to change a little bit on that, you know, with some of the storms that we're getting, as Alderman O'Brien quite often brings up. And then as evidence of yesterday's storm, with that heavy wet snow, there was probably some damage that happened that people would like to see their yards cleaned up a little sooner. So, maybe it's worthwhile having that conversation.
David, I'd like to add that I thought one of the residents, Nancy Holmeyer's suggestion that given, since things were so slow in July and August, that maybe that's a time when we only have one pickup and could easily add a pickup a little bit earlier. I know that Gary, you had said that what happens is just end up with a lot more stuff, but given that those months are so slow, it might not be the case. So, it might be worth looking into.
Well, it's a conversation for the future of the city council, they have. It's gonna include a couple of those gentlemen sitting out in the audience here tonight. So, too, that'll give you guys something to think about. So, did we have a motion on this?
No.
So moved.
Motion by Chanset, second by Stark. Roll call, please.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
Nope.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Okay, that was what, 11 yes?
11 three.
11 yes, three no's. Motion's carried. Okay, next item is the Administrator's Report. Ms. Newman?
Good evening. With the snow event that we had yesterday, it also, one of the problems that we were having was the snow occlusion of the signals for all of the southbound lanes. And I know that I saw a lot of reports on social media and even heard from some of you about seeing some near miss accidents as a result of that. Today, Gary Holmes reached out to MEED, the company that installs and maintains our signalized equipment. And while the Randall Road signals are under King County's jurisdiction, they own those signals. The city does own the signal right out here that's at Island, Shumway and Wilson Street. And so, we'll be exploring an option for a certain type of lens that covers the LED light that seems to, while not completely eliminating the problem of occlusion, it does seem to do a pretty good job, at least on the red light that is so important to be able to see in a snow event. So, maybe if we can demonstrate its effectiveness on this small intersection here, that that might be an example regionally for others to use to try and improve the safety under those conditions.
We could just get the lights up, the ambulances to be the red lights on stoplights you can see those.
Yes, those you can see, for sure. On tomorrow night, we will have a Committee of the Whole meeting that'll start at 7 o'clock. It's a pretty light agenda in that the only things on there are the renewal of the Ride and Kane Program, which provides economical rides to our seniors and disabled individuals in our community. And then the other thing is the first opportunity that we have to sit down and revisit our strategic action plan, our first quarter update. And I think I'm looking forward to sharing with you the activity that has taken place on those items and hear from you, your feedback on those, and also a plan for the future. Also, it was mentioned earlier, but staff and members